The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-one present.
A quorum being present. I'll ask everyone in the chambers who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We've dispensed with line item three, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest Fred Circey from the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters and Greg Meyer who's with Tills Park Neighborhood Association and my friend. And that's all I think I have on my list this morning.
Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I've got several honored guests today. I'd like to have as my honored guest Mark Carley, Jim Fredericks, and Jack Holleran sitting behind me. And, more importantly, sorry guys, the junior class from Lift for Life Academy down in Sular.
Please stand. Welcome to the board this morning. Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest Jeff Hans from the St. Louis Carpenter's Regional Council. And I would like to acknowledge a farmer's student, Nick Russo, works for STL TV. And it's nice to know that we're both gainfully employed.
Alderwoman from the six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Emily Miller formerly with the City's Planning Department visiting us from Kansas City today, and Anthony Lancia with AGC.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have Percy Green III, firefighter at the City of St. Louis, as my honored guest today. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome David Jackson, former member of the St. Louis Public School Board, as my honored guest this morning.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73, Nathan Lett, third vice president EMS from Local 73, and Gary Ottenfield representative from Painters District Council 58. And last but not least, Lou Green, or Lou Hamilton.
Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest Ben Stryker with the Clayton Times, and also Jeff Abusi with the Operators.
Alderwoman from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest Tyler Middlebrook from the second ward.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have Mr. Leroy Grant and Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T as my honored guests.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Before we wrap it up, I just want to tell the class from Lift for Life Academy, thanks for coming down. We really enjoy having you here. And during the meeting, if any of you Aldermen have a chance, go over and meet the students. Let's give the administrators a big round of applause. Could you please stand, administrator from Lift for Life Academy? Thank you. Thanks for all the work. They have a couple wrestlers over there that are going to districts today, so good luck in districts. Let's get them looking around. All right. Alderwoman from the tenth, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we are gathered here on, what is it, February ninth? This is National Bagel Day. Go out and, that means eat a bagel. Don't go out and beg for one. But on this day in 1895 volleyball was invented. In 1964, the Beatles made their first appearance on Ed Sullivan. In the day that changed the life of the Alderman from the twenty-third, on this day in 1966, Mr. Ed aired his final episode. His favorite actor was no longer on TV. Thank you.
Today is also Thomas Shepherd's birthday. He slips it by us every year, but congratulations. Happy birthday to him. Approval of the minutes.
We have none.
Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes. I have the following correspondence from her honor, the mayor. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resources Commission. The reappointment of Ken Franklin, who resides in the fifth ward. The reappointment of William Seethoff, who resides in the seventh ward. The reappointment of Sherri Wilbermeyer, who resides in the twenty-eighth ward. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruzen, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Madam Clerk, please dispense with that item. They will introduce it in the upcoming weeks at the request of the sponsor.
So noted. That's the extent of report of city officials.
We'll dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items eight through, eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 257, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 3434 and 3436 Indiana. Board Bill 258, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, and ordinance approving the petition to establish the Gateway Land Community Improvement District. Board Bill 259, sponsored by Alderman Oldenberg, and ordinance amending ordinance 68481, approved November the ninth, two thousand and nine, for the purpose of prohibiting smoking within 100 yards of any park, playground, except in those areas in which smoking is not regulated under ordinance 68481, and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 259, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 257, and to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 258. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Streets Committee, Board Bill 251, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Alfred and Bingham Street, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Alfred Street at Bingham Street, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 252, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, authorizing the 2018 St. Louis Works and the 50/50 Sidewalk Program citywide appropriating $5,300,000 from the Street Improvement Fund, containing sections for descriptions of work, approval of plans, specifications, work and materials guaranteed, estimated costs from city funds, supplemental agreements and reversion, authorizations, applicable state and federal wage rate requirements, equal opportunity provisions, the mayor's executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 253, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance pertaining to parking within the Talmadge Residential Parking District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location, restrictions for current parking of residential parking zones within the Talmadge Residential Parking District, authorizing the placement of residential parking only signs within the district, prohibiting park and prohibiting the parking within the district of any vehicle which does not display the authorized permit, containing definitions, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill 256, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to the City of St. Louis Parking Commission and the administration and use of the Parking Meter Fund. Board Bill 244, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, and ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Bismarck Street, which will begin at the intersection of Barton Street and Seventh Street and run north on Seventh Street to Lamai Street. The following board bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill 246, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen, Oldenberg Mohammed Williamson Ingracia, Davis Vacaro, Howard Murphy, Alderwoman Boyd, President Reed, and Alderwoman Middlebrook. And ordinance pertaining to the additional sales tax and corresponding use tax established by the city, ordinance number 70580, prohibiting any special real allocation of the revenue generated by such tax for purposes other than those specified in city ordinance 70580, except as approved by the Board of Aldermen in an independent appropriation board bill that is independent of the board's adoption of the city's annual operating plan for an applicable fiscal year. Board Bill 207, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, and ordinance approving the dissolution of the East Loop Parkview Gardens Special Business District and discharge of the members of its Board of Commissioners by repealing ordinance 63634. Board Bill 172, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance authorizing and directing a mayor and a comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration a sum of $3,500, a quitclaim deed to Botanical Heights Homes, certain city-owned property located in City Block 5114, which property is known by address 4223 Gibson Avenue. Board Bill 221, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance approving the petition to establish an EQH Market Street Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose therefor, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 210, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports of the City to execute it on behalf of the city, a consent to assignment by ABM Parking Services Incorporated to ABM Aviation, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
We will dispense with line item fourteen. Madam Clerk, at the request of the sponsor of Board Bill 129, could you place that on the regular perfection calendar?
So noted.
And at the request of Alderman from the twenty-fourth, place Board Bill 250 on the regular perfection count.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill 206, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 5122 through 24 Kensington. Board Bill 213, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 1216 through 1218 Craft. Board Bill 223, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 5522 Delmar. Board Bill 229, sponsored by Alderman Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 3450 Oregon. Board Bill 230, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 3024 Potomac. Board Bill 238, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 6132 and 7600 Vermont, and 7806 and 7810 Virginia. Board Bill 247, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Forest Park Scattered Sites Five. Board Bill 212, as amended, sponsored by President Reed, and ordinance amending ordinance 69190 by repealing section two of that ordinance and enacting in lieu thereof a new section two pertaining to the same subject matters and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 181, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, and ordinance amending ordinance 63535, approved August the first, 1995, by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement for 11th Clark, Eighth, and Popular redevelopment areas, authorized by ordinance 63535. Board Bill 205, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 2400 through 22 North Sarah and 4056 through 58 St. Ferdinand. Board Bill 214, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4200 through 98 and 4201 through 99 Harris. Board Bill 228, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 701 through 705 North First Street. Board Bill 201231, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 3548 South Broadway. Board Bill 211, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December the sixth, 2017, to change the zoning of properties indicated on the district map from C, Multiple Family Dwelling District, to the F Neighborhood Commercial District at 3306 Wisconsin. So as to include the described parts of the land in City Block 1532 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 189, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on November the eighth, 2017, to change the zoning of properties indicated on the district map in City Block 3666, from C, Multiple Family Dwelling District and A, F Neighborhood Commercial District, to the F Neighborhood Commercial District only at 2505 North Sarah Street, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 191, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to provide for the establishment of a Forest Park Southeast Farm Base District, and containing a severability clause and an effective date clause. Board Bill 192, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to repeal the Grove Commercial Area Special Use District ordinance 67924 and setting an effective date. Board Bill 248, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of one or more series tax increment revenue notes for St. Louis Innovation District. RPA three redevelopment project, series A and series B, series C, in an aggregate pencil amount not to exceed $18,400,000 plus cost of issuance for certain reimbursable redevelopment project costs and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 249, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance adopting and approving a redevelopment project for areas three as described in amended and restated St. Louis Innovation District Tax Increment Finance and Redevelopment Plan, adopting tax increment financing within the redevelopment project area three, establishing RPA three account of the St. Louis Innovation District Special Allocation Fund, authorizing execution of First Amendment to amended and restated redevelopment agreement between the city and St. Louis Innovation District, prescribing the forms and details of said agreement, authorizing certain actions by city officials and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 240, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderman Oldenberg, and ordinance providing for and directing the submission to qualified electors at special bond election to be held on the seventh day of August, 2018. A proposal for the incurring of indebtedness and issuance of bonds said city in evidence thereof in an aggregate amount not to exceed $50 million upon the assent to the said proposal of two-thirds of the qualified electors and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the twenty-second. You recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, I move for perfection of all aforementioned bills on the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the nineteenth. Any discussion? Aldermen in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, and ordinance to make it unlawful, subject to those exceptions stated herein, for any person to ride, walk, or otherwise lead a horse or horses on, along, or over the public streets, alleys, sidewalks, within the city, and the paths, and trails, and any extensions thereof within the city.
Alderman from the twenty-third. You recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number 129.
Yes, Mr. President.
You would like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I'm actually want to put that on the...
But you have to make the motion. You can't discuss this. Make the motion to perfect Board Bill 129?
Well, actually, I want to move it to the, well, okay, to perfect Board Bill. Thank you for the help.
Okay, so you moved to perfect Board Bill 129. Entertainer, second on that motion? Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Please proceed.
So, just real quickly, an update. We've been working back and forth in Jefferson City on this. Jefferson City, the newest Senate bill, allows us to regulate the horses and the horse carriages to come up with reasonable regulations, whether it's going to be heat or how many horses are allowed out. We're going to be discussing that. Their only ask from me was to hold off or slow down on the bill that I'm doing that would ban them. In their bill, they do allow us to regulate, which will be going to the Board of Public Service. We'll start to establish what fair and reasonable rules are. So at this point, I'm going to move this to the, on the formal calendar. And just so everybody understands why I'm moving it, I think it's a better deal that we can actually try to regulate them. If they start to change or do whatever, then we'll go back to our original plan.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please, at the request of the sponsor, please place Board Bill 129 on the perfection informal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill 250, sponsored by Alderman Kotar and Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 300 South Broadway.
Alderman from the seventh. You recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number 250.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill 250.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh. Entertain a second on that motion? Seconded by Alderman from the fourth. Any discussion? Alderman from the seventh, any discussion?
I will just say that this board bill, Board Bill 250, is to approve a redevelopment plan for a 33-story high-rise on the southeast corner of Clark and Broadway across from Busch Stadium. The site is currently owned by the St. Louis Community College. It pays zero taxes. There's a couple dozen employees there. The community college wishes to sell the building and the land and consolidate their operations on their campus on Forest Park. The proposed structure would be market-rate apartments. It'll have about nine layers of parking. It'll be the first residential building really built downtown since the Great Recession. I would ask for your favorable consideration of Board Bill 250.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Alderman from the sixteenth, been borrowing your mic.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be short. I have a letter that we're sending to SLDC about this bill. So I'm just going to wait and hold my comments until the third reading vote next week, if that's fine. I think there are some points to discuss about this bill. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I stand and rise to support this bill and this project. One of the things that we have to realize is that all of the things that we do on behalf of the city come in different phases. We're trying to redevelop our downtown area. We're trying to have a mixed-use opportunity. We have some hotel opportunities that are coming forth that have the ability for the family members to have good rates. We have the more expensive type of hotels. But we also have to have that level of experience for housing as well. So we do have moderate and low-income housing downtown. We also have what we consider true market rate. But now we're going to a next level, which we want to have. If we look at the people who are investing in our town, they do have the money to pay for higher rates. And they also can spend more money downtown, which brings more tax dollars into our coffers. And we need that. So we have to make sure that we have everything to offer so that our city can prosper. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clear something up. I think you mentioned I was a co-sponsor on this bill, but I am not.
No, I think the clerk, clerk, did you make note of that?
243 committee substitute is what I requested to be a co-sponsor on. I do not wish to be a co-sponsor on 250.
Yeah, could you get that note to whoever you, I don't know who you notified of that, but make sure you just write it down and hand it to them and they'll make sure to note it.
I will, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Would the Alderman from the seventh yield for questioning?
Alderman from the seventh, we yield to the Alderman from the twelfth. Alderman from the twelfth, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderman. I got a couple of emails from some people in my ward saying it's a historic building and tearing it down would be wrong. But I believe you went through the proper procedures on that with the preservation board and that?
Yes, Alderman. So the building is, it's an old building. It's a high merit building, built by Isaac Taylor, who's done a number of buildings downtown, including the municipal courts building, the LaSalle building there on Broadway and Olive. The Cultural Resource Office recommended the demolition of the building if and only if this project was a go. Obviously, you can't tear it down until this project's a go, it's financed and everything. The preservation board, it went from Culture Resources to the Preservation Board for preliminary review. The Preservation Board approved the demo with certain conditions, one of which was to explore the possibility of saving the facade of the building. So we have some engineers working on that proposal. We'll be going back to the Preservation Board now that we have, if this passes, because there'll be a redevelopment plan, and the redevelopment plan specifically calls for the demolition of the building.
All right, thank you, Alderman. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the Alderman from the seventh yield for questioning?
Alderman from the seventh, will you yield for questions? Alderman from the twenty-first, please proceed.
Just for the record, what is the vacancy population in downtown?
The vacancy? On the residential side, the market's pretty strong, hence this project being in front of us today. I want to say vacancy for residential is about 2% downtown. So the downtown residential market's fairly strong. I wish I could say the same thing about the commercial market. It is much weaker.
I wish I could say the same for my ward. Also, what? How much will the city be losing in tax abatement for this redevelopment plan? What's the revenues that we're losing?
Yeah, so attached to the redevelopment plan, I believe, is Mr. Ferry's analysis of the project, which he gave very high marks. Right now, the building pays no taxes. It's a government-owned building. So there's no tax dollars, no property tax dollars flowing from the building. This is not a full abatement. It would be, it's a 90% for the first 10 years and then steps down after that. So starting day one, this building's going to pay a lot more taxes and a lot more to the school district than it does currently.
And sort of a funny question. Will low-income housing be included in this development plan?
No, this project doesn't include any low-income units. I'd note that downtown, we have approximately in the seventh ward alone, over 1,000 affordable housing units. Most recently, we did an affordable housing project in the Arcade Building, which is several hundred affordable units. We also just extended one of the Couples Buildings to keep that as an affordable unit. That was actually scheduled to burn off, and we've extended the affordable housing component of that project, but this would be market-rate units.
Thank you, Alderman. No further questions, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the seventh, you recognize the close on the perfection of Board Bill 250.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for your favorable consideration of Board Bill 250, and I renew my motion.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the fourth, that we perfect Board Bill number 250. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther. Alderman Gunther? Alderman Valmer? Alderwoman Martin? Alderman Honowitz? Alderwoman Murphy? Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Green? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vacaro? Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Cone? Alderman Williamson? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderwoman Navarro? President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Ingracia? She said no. Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Vacaro? Alderman Cone? Alderwoman Boyd? Sixteen ayes votes, seven no votes, one present.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion of the Alderman from the seventh and perfected board bill number two fifty.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board bills two thirty-six and two forty-three committee substitute.
Alderman from the... Alderman from the seventeenth? Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, I actually, I rise, I was going to request that two, a board bill of mine be placed on the informal calendar.
From the consent-
It's from the perfection consent calendar. Are, are we on perfection consent, or are, you said third reading consent?
Yeah, yeah, if that, that will have to-
All right, um-
Like to just make a motion for the adoption of the bills on third reading consent calendar.
All right, I move for a third reading consent.
Uh, Alderman from the seventeenth has moved that we adopt the board bills on third reading consent calendar, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderwoman Ingracia? Alderman Koltar? Alderman Gunther? Alderman Valmer? Alderwoman Martin? Alderman Honowitz? Alderwoman Murphy? Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Green? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vacaro? Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Cone? Alderman Williamson? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderwoman Navarro? President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderwoman Martin? Alderwoman Murphy? Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderwoman Boyd? Twenty-four ayes votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from Alderman from the seventeenth and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading, report of engrossment.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board bills two thirty-six and two forty-three committee substitute.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Members of the board, I move that we adopt the courtesy consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. My courtesy resolution is about Dennis Edward of The Temptations. I'm sure most of you know, you heard the song "My Girl" and The Temptations, Cloud Nine. And I move that we embank this resolution.
Resolution two eight, so Alderman from the fourth has made a motion that we embank resolution two eighteen. I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth and Alderman from the twenty-second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please, uh, make another copy of resolution two eighteen embank?
So noted.
It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion is carry.
That's the extent of courtesy resolutions consent.
First reading resolutions.
We have none.
Second reading. Alderman from the nineteenth?
I'd like to ask for, um, suspension of the rules to submit a resolution on the floor.
Okay, first reading, it's been, uh, is it on everyone's desk?
It's on everyone's desk.
It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth that we suspend the rules for purposes of introducing the resolution from the floor. It's been seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth.
Resolution number two twenty.
It's resolution number two twenty. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderwoman Ingracia? Alderman Koltar? Alderman Gunther? Alderman Valmer? Alderwoman Martin? Alderman Honowitz? Alderwoman Murphy? Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Green? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman, Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vacaro? Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Cone? Alderman Williamson? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderwoman Navarro? President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Cone? Alderman Williamson? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderwoman Navarro? So I can't get caught up. Twenty-four ayes votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the nineteenth, and I introduce resolution two twenty. Madam Clerk, first reading resolutions.
Resolution two twenty, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. The Board of Aldermen, now therefore a bit of, oh.
Three to four, word.
Transportation and Commerce Committee to provide legislative oversight of the city explor- exploration of the Federal Aviation Administration Airport privatization pilot program with respect to the St. Louis Lambert International Airport.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution two twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. For those of you who have had a lot of concern about this process, I've had the same level of concern and probably a little bit of anger as well, as how it started out. But we have the, we have the opportunity to correct it. We also have the opportunity to move forward in an orderly fashion with a lot of transparency and inclusion, and most especially, a clear understanding and open port hole to our community, so they can understand where we are and what we are doing. So in this resolution, let's start off at the beginning. We know that, uh, people have a misunderstanding that we are going to sell the airport. That is not true. This process has never been about selling the airport. It is about privatization. Privatization is another term that is used, and many people know it by saying outsourcing. So outsourcing a service, it is done with school districts, it is done by corporations. And so this is an exploration process to identify whether or not that's something we want to do. And when I say we, again, there has been a misunderstanding sent to the public that there was one body or one entity that's going to make this decision, and that is not true. According to our charter and our ordinances of the City of St. Louis, this process is like any other process that we deal with. So we have an airport commission, we have a transportation committee here, we have a Board of Aldermen, and we have the Board of E and A. It must go through every entity before any decision is made to move forward on an RFP or anything else. Where we are today is, there is a suggestion that was made for an entity to have the opportunity to do the expiration for the process of then issuing an RFP. Some people are not happy about that, because it was done rather quietly. But many of the Aldermen here took the time, and they made sure that they were present in two of those meetings. And so when the suggestion was made, they gave their input on what they thought should be included in the contract. And remember, there's not even a contract signed yet to do the expiration. Again, clear up the process for the public. It is no reason to send fear and anxiety out to our community. It is unfair to our constituency, and so we need to clear that up as well. There is no contract yet. There was only a recommendation for a entity to move forward in looking at how we present this process. Again, I'm going to say manage and operate. We are not going to sell the airport. We are not looking for anyone to purchase the airport. The airport is not for sale. That has to be clear. It must be said over and over again. So in this resolution, you will also see that a lot of due diligence must be done on our side, as well as whomever, because again, the contract has not been finished, the contract has not been signed, the contract has not gone before E and A. So we don't even know if there will be a process, because we don't know if there's two votes at E and A yet. Calm down. As we move forward, we are requesting in this resolution that there is total transparency in the process. We want to have online opportunities for the public to look at the information that is gathered. We want to make sure that there's a report system in place, scheduled reporting system in place, to come before the airport commission, as well as the transportation committee here at the Board of Aldermen, and that should be a minimum of every sixty days. There's no reason for us not to have all information timely so that it can be discussed properly and the acknowledgement of what is taking place. We know that there are many reasons why we would probably like to see an opportunity to get more money from that operation of the airport. But we are not sure about anything today. You can't be sure about anything today. I can't be sure about anything today, because I don't have data to announce, or data analysis done before me. So hypotheses that have been put out to you, the public, and to this board, that's all it is. There's nothing else. Again, the contract has not been signed. The vote from E and A has not taken place. So we are not standing poised to sell the airport or even move forward in the process, because you don't have anything in place yet. You're still working on that. But preferably, we have gotten ahead of it to look at all aspects of how the process should take place, how we will be included, and how the public will have information ongoing. I ask my colleagues, as we move forward in this, if it moves forward, again, you haven't had the vote of the contract from E and A yet. If we move forward in this process, I need us to be very present. Don't come Johnny-come lately, talking about what if and you should have. Be present. So when this information is out there, read it, analyze it, ask questions if you have some. Come to the transportation committee meetings. That's why we're going to have them. Currently, because of this process, we are educating the transportation committee. I don't want documents coming before them, and they have no clue of what it means. So we are having ongoing informational opportunities for our transportation committee. We had our airport director come in, give us a full analysis of how the airport operates. We had our minority, uh, diversity person come in, give us a report. Next week, we will have the person who is in charge of drafting the contract come in and talk to us at the transportation committee next Thursday. So we will be doing this probably every week. Committee members, just get ready. Uh, because we're going to be prepared. We're going to have all the knowledge we need, and we will be able to do our due diligence very, very well. I'm going to allow myself to take questions, which you know I normally don't. But, uh, I think this is important enough, because I think the public needs to hear everything that's on anybody's mind. I think this is an important step for us, and there's no reason for us not to do what is in this resolution. There is no reason, I have not had any, anything but support from all entities involved thus far. You have to remember that the previous administration started this. The current administration feels that it's okay to move forward. But if we're going to move forward, we're going to move forward together. We're going to, we're going to be in this, we're going to know everything at the same time any other entity knows it. And that's why I thought it was important to put this resolution in place, and I ask that other members from our Transportation Committee to please share how you've been involved in this process and give their opinion as well.
All right. All right, thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I appreciate the Alderwoman saying what she said, and you're right, transparency is the way to go, but the way this started out, there wasn't very much transparency, the way this was handled. The first meeting that was going to be in the City Councilor's office, I called Michael Garvin, asked if I could attend, he goes, there wouldn't be no use in you coming down, either would be no room, and secondly, we're just discussing, or discussing some things. But then I find out later, some other Aldermen showed up and they let him in. So that's not being very transparent to me. You know, the previous administration's gone, it's kind of like agitators running the other way. But right, but there is a lot of concerns, and nobody said nothing, we were selling the airport, it's always been about privatizing it. So I'm willing to listen, I have a lot of concerns out there. We have employees out there who work, so you know, when you privatize something, they can get rid of you, period. Where's, where, where their job's going to be, where's their pension going to be when you privatize? Where's a lot of things going to be? Are they going to be able to have contracts, negotiate the unions they belong to? So you know, that's a lot of my concern. The airport brings money in every year. If they're going to privatize and do this, that, and everything else, when you privatize something, I don't know how much they're willing to pay, and we're still going to own the airport at the end, I believe. So that's a lot of concern. So I'm willing to listen, do everything, and I'll make my decision then, and I will ask questions, but you know, there's no doubt, we have taxpayers strapped in the City of St. Louis. I mean, we're talking about doing this, and I hope, if it does get privatized and everything works out, that we use some money for the homeless people out on these streets that's out there in the cold every winter and in the summer when there's no air, that we can maybe get a, a, a health facility to put people where they belong and get the right help. So I'm always willing to listen, but you know, I had things just pop in my mind right away, and I really didn't appreciate the City Councilor's office telling me there's no use in coming down. Right, I, yeah, that's where I found out, so. And that's all I have to say. I think that, you know, moving forward, there's a lot of things we have to really take into consideration and make sure it's done right.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
First off, I want to commend the Alderwoman from the nineteenth on this effort. I think that this is a step in the right direction. As a member of the Transportation and Commerce Committee, I'm, I'm impressed by her leadership in doing this and getting this resolution together. It's quite, quite detailed, and I think that, you know, the reports that we'll get from the administration every sixty days will inform this process as we move forward. And just to reiterate, we're not selling the airport, and we haven't entered into a deal to privatize it. We're looking at it and weighing the options, and not unless all the, the people vote for it, the airlines, us, E and A, all of those things have to be in alignment, and, and this process will probably take up to two years, eighteen months to two years. So I think that we're moving forward slowly. We had a misstep with a miscommunication with administration, and I think that Alderwoman Davis has, has brought this about and, and shed light on it, and I think that I, on her behalf and the behalf of the Committee, the Commerce and Transportation Committee, I invite all the Aldermen to come to those meetings so they can firsthand observe what's going on. I think it'll be very informative. And along with this, I think we can maybe learn something on, if, even if we don't privatize, we can learn some things on how to benefit our population and bring more revenue in and maybe expand our airport and bring some international flights in. I don't know, but we're, we're ready to open, and, and I'm always willing to learn. Alderwoman Davis, I would like to be added as a sponsor of this resolution.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the fourteenth. Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I also appreciate the effort on behalf of the Alderwoman from the nineteenth to add some transparency to this process, which I think is desperately needed. However, I do think it makes a statement when this board weighs in on something like this. I think it has a lot of weight, and I just received this a couple of minutes ago and have not had a chance to review it. So I could not, I, I could not support the resolution at this time without having a little bit more time, because I do think that the, this, this board, what we have to say matters, and I think we should really carefully consider how we want this process to move forward. So thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, and also thank you to the Alderwoman from the nineteenth. I think that this is an important step toward transparency. The, I guess the concern that I have is, you know, we're, we're starting at a place where an RFP has already been issued, and there were some problems within that RFP because we're not studying all the options. We're only, you know, we're not studying what the city could do to, to optimize the airport. We're only looking at it through the lens of privatization. And so I guess my, my question would be, would you be willing to?
Alderwoman from the fifteenth.
Or sorry, would the, the Alderwoman from the nineteenth yield?
Alderwoman from the nineteenth, will you yield the question to the Alderwoman from the fifteenth?
Yes. Would you be willing to send this to committee to refine some of the language since all of us just got this, you know, not too long ago? And then we could, so we can make sure that it really encompasses everything, all of the information that we really need to be getting about this process as we move forward.
We are, we should send it to committee. That gives everybody an opportunity to think about it a little bit more, have further discussion. One of the things that I think may not have been clear enough, is mentioned but not clear enough, the, any decision that is made requires two-thirds vote from this board. That's very hard to get. We also know that the Airport Commission has to be a part of this process as well. And before we do an RFP to anybody to actually do the task, if that is our decision, we would be involved again. So right now, this process where we are today is to simply hire somebody to do the expiration, but not hire, this is not hiring an entity to do it.
Correct.
So that part of it is what we, where we really need to have a lot of information. So as they're moving forward, exploring things, the information gets to us quick, not wait till the end. So we want information on a regular study basis so that we can analyze it ourselves.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I guess my concern is that the RFP that was issued in October that Grow Missouri was chosen for has very specific parameters in, in the information that they are seeking only through the lens of privatization, not looking at all of the options in regard to what the city could do with the airport versus a private entity. And so I, I guess what I, what I would like to see in, you know, if this is going to committee now, is a broadening so that we're getting information about all of the options, all of the ways that we can enhance the airport and optimize the airport, not just through the lens of privatization. So thank you very much, and thanks for sending it to committee.
Alderwoman from the twenty-third.
I'd like to actually make a motion, and I did talk to the sponsor first, but I'd like to make a motion that we refer this resolution to the Transportation Committee.
It's been moved, all right, Alderwoman from the, Alderwoman from the nineteenth, are you going to make, you want to second the motion?
I'll second the motion, and moving it to the committee, we will have our first hearing on this resolution.
Hold on a second. It's been moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-third, seconded by Alderwoman from the nineteenth, that we send Resolution two twenty to the Transportation and Commerce Committee. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to commend you, Alderwoman in nineteenth ward, for really being proactive in checking into this airport deal. You know, the privatization of the airport may not be all bad, but we don't know anything about it. And I don't appreciate the way it was handled. You know, and that's the problem with this city. You know, it's no transparency when it comes to the mayor's office and other offices. They really need to go through the Board of Aldermen and also look into the city charter. Now, it may not be a violation of the city charter by, you know, privatizing the airport, I'm not sure. But it's a deal that stinks because first and foremost, you should have been part of the process at the beginning if you were on the Transportation and Commerce, being the chairperson of the, of the committee. So city jobs may be at stake, I don't know, because you got a lot of city employees that work at the airport, and that, that could be scrutinized, so we really don't know exactly what's going on. And I hate to say it, you know, sometime when Mr. Rick Seinfeld gets involved with something, it bears watching. But at the same token, I appreciate, you know, your expertise, you getting to the forefront to head this deal off so we can look at it, you know, and have an investigation and talk about it. This happened three or four years ago with the water department, and the water department was up for sale. And our president got ahead of the job, you know, and he stopped that because they were trying to sell the water department several years ago. So those things really need to be checked into, and as long as we try to do these backroom smoke deals, you know, this city will never progress, and that's the problem with this city. We need to be more transparent and talk to everybody that's involved. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Resolution two twenty has been referred to committee, so any further discussion will happen when you take it up in committee, you'll set a committee hearing for it. I just also want to commend Alderwoman from the nineteenth, for those of you who do not have the opportunity to attend the Airport Commission meetings. I've seen her ever since she's been on Airport Commission meetings, when she sits down out there, she fights for members of this Board of Aldermen and members of the city, people who, who aren't there to fight for themselves, so I want to commend you for that. Please inform the clerk when we get to the announcements period what you plan to do in terms of hearings. Second reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Ms. Lawrence, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, Streets and Traffic and Refuge Committee meeting at nine AM, also on Tuesday, Public Safety Committee meeting at eleven AM, also on Tuesday, Legislation Committee meeting, and that's at six thirty PM. On Friday, Full Board meeting, ten AM in the chambers, that's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the fourth.
Members of the board, I'd just like to make a progress report on the Fourth Ward, the Morris Science Temple, having a ribbon cutting on the twenty-seventh of this month for their new temple that they're opening up in the ward. That's on Sarah in the twenty-nine-hundred block, also on Sarah in the twenty-four-hundred block. There's two new buildings being constructed and forty-two new housing units being constructed. So come over to the Fourth Ward and come in and invest and buy in the Fourth Ward. I have twelve hundred and forty-two empty structures so you can become an entrepreneur. Thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks, Alderman. Alderman's doing a great job of, also, we also have with us today Nicole Maliter from SLU Investment Properties. Thank you for attending today's meeting, Nicole. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
President, I'd like to schedule a Transportation Committee meeting for next Thursday at ten AM.
All right. Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
President, I just want to announce that the Delmar Loop was recognized by the Missouri Arts Council for the twenty-eighteen Creative Community Award.
Excellent, let's give them a round of applause. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? I think he's up for the motion. Yes, Alderwoman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, I've only been standing here before anybody else, Mr. President.
Yeah, yeah, waiting for you to do the motion.
Sometimes we get lost on this side when you start looking out this way. But anyway, we are having a street committee hearing at nine o'clock in the Kennedy Room on Tuesday, and it's about trash. So I sent the email to all my colleagues about any concerns that you may have about refuge services in the City of St. Louis. We're paying an extra three dollars on our bill to have trash picked up, and there are a lot of issues. So I want to make sure I invite the public, come out, people that are paying three dollars extra, voice your concern, or at least be present during the hearing, and invite all my colleagues to come out and voice your concern, and let's work on strategies of trying to make this system a little better. We all know we need new trucks, we need new drivers, mechanics. So I've asked all the parties and stakeholders involved, from Paul Payne, the Budget Director, Counting the Money, Nick Young, the Commissioner, Todd Walterman, Director of Operations, Dottie Pennington, who's with CSB, they will all be present and entertain whatever questions that the committee or the Board of Aldermen may have. So let's get on top of this, and let's make a system that's not working well right now work better. Thank you.
All right. Alderwoman from the twenty-second, when you're operating as the floor majority leader during announcements, we, we recognize you last because then you'll give your announcement right before your motion.
Oh, well, thank you, this is a new role for me.
It's a new role, but you got it.
All right.
That's why we had you standing there. Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to introduce my family, State Senator Jake Hummel, and our kids, Tim and Emma.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I also wanted to announce Alderwoman Beth Murphy and I will be, or the Alderwoman from the thirteenth, and I will be hosting beignets and coffee at the Lyle House this Sunday from eleven to two. It's the big historic White House in Carondelet Park at thirty-nine-hundred Holly Hills. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Alderwoman from the third.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Of course, you all know we have a lot going on in the city. We've got a, they can murder almost every day, at least enough right now that we're, coming into this year, we're looking at having an extremely long year. There is a march coming up, well, sort of a motorcade. In my ward earlier this year, we had three young ladies that were murdered on John Street, and this Saturday, there'll be a motorcade for these individuals, these young ladies, so we can bring awareness to what's going on and hopefully get some attention to them so we can catch the murderers. I just want to read what's on the flyer here. At approximately three AM, a barbaric home invasion occurred on twelve twenty-two seventeen within St. Louis City Ward Three, in which three women were chased outside their home and gunned down inside of a vehicle. As of today, there has not been an arrest. Please adjourn, Dick Gregory Dignity Patrol and the bereaved families of the St. Louis Three in a ceremonious motorcade beginning at the Martin Luther King Junior Statue in Fountain Park at forty-nine oh one Fountain Ave, ending at Reba and Dominique's Home at forty-two forty John Ave. So if you all get the chance, please come out, it'll be this Saturday at three PM. We asking everybody to speak up and speak out, just, you know, be aware, things are going on, and we do have some control over our situation if we start coming out, not when the police are shooting, but coming out when we are shooting ourselves. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman, for that message. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the fourth.
President, members of the board, you, you guys see me with this bling bling on. This was awarded to me by Alderman Joe VaCarroll, and I didn't have to earn it.
Big money, Joe. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of board, I move to excuse the Alderman from the first, twentieth, and twenty-second due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderwoman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderwoman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of board, I move that we adjourn until Friday, February the sixteenth.
Moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderwoman from the thirteenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Stand and adjourn.